The December 14, 2021 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove your hats and turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding irregular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board's secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mrs. John Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
We're going to now bring up Ms. Lisa Panzer, School Social Worker, and Ms. Katie Burlow, School Social Worker. Please come forward and provide us with our inspiration and pledge.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lisa Panzer, and I'm the lead School Social Worker for our school district. It is my honor this evening to introduce Ms. Katie Burlow, who also is a School Social Worker and one of our committee members for our Red Ribbon Committee. I also have with us Ms. Tammy Slaughter. She'll be joining us. She is representing the Marion County Children's Alliance, who partners with us with Marion County School Board to host our Red Ribbon Campaign. So please, Ms. Burlow, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Campbell, Mrs. Throer, Ms. King, Mr. Browning, Board Chair Cummings, and Superintendent Gullett. The 2021 Red Ribbon Week was a huge success. This year, we had record-breaking participation for the schools. The community was involved more than previous years, and there were 12,000 or 1,277 people at the kickoff event, which was held at the Ocala Drive-In. That has been the most attended event for the last 21 years. The Red Ribbon is a crucial part of bringing awareness to substance misuse to our community and, most importantly, to the students who we serve. For those who may not be aware, Red Ribbon started as a grassroots campaign to bring acknowledgement surrounding the death of a drug enforcement agent. Angered parents and the community youth across the country began wearing red ribbons as a symbol of their commitment to raise awareness of the killing and destruction caused by drugs in America. And now for our winners. This year's submissions were judged by the Children's Alliance and two impartial community judges. The submissions were some of the most creative and thoughtful that the team has ever seen. The winners are incredibly deserving of their prizes and were judged based on signing of a banner or pledge, their creativity, documentation of their events, and the spirit that had ignited this school. And now, Ms. Tammy Slaughter.
Hello, thank you for having me this evening. I do work for the Marion County Children's Alliance, and I am very proud to be here today to announce our winners for the 2021 Red Ribbon Observance Week Contest. We're going to start with elementary. Our elementary school winner this year was Oakcrest Elementary.
Yay!
Principal Chris Sandy, she's a good friend of the Alliance. Jennifer Godson, Content Area Specialist and Red Ribbon Coordinator. We would like to present you.
We would like to thank you, first of all. Thank you very much for your participation and all of your hard work. We'd like to present your school with a $500 check.
Oh, my God!
Don't touch the ink.
It comes off.
Okay, alright, alright.
And then I'll get one, too.
Okay.
Thank you. And then, we're actually giving you a check.
Wow!
Here's the real one.
Excellent.
There you go. I will take the big fake check, and I will hand you the real check.
Thank you.
Thank you, so good to see you.
Yes.
Accepting the award for our middle school winner is, I'm sorry, our middle school winner is Bellevue Middle School, and accepting the award is Ms. April Godwin, Secretary for the Math Program Specialist, former CAS at Bellevue Middle School, Erin Conrad, TV Productions Teacher, Kendall Hunt, Student, and Samantha Anderson, Student. So, welcome. I want to say thank you so much for participating in Red Ribbon Week and bringing awareness to our community about the dangers of drugs.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work, ladies. We appreciate you participating. I want to present you with the big check. The ink does come off, so present you with the big check. I'll let...
You'll get it?
Okay. Alright. And then I'm going to present you with the real check.
They're both real.
Bellevue Middle School, there you go. You're welcome. Thank you so much for your...
Thank you, guys.
Congratulations.
And then, our high school winner this year was Bellevue High School, and accepting the award this evening is Heather Guest, Principal, Mary Fromfelter, Student. I hope I said that right.
Macy?
I'm sorry, Macy Fromfelter. I messed up Macy and said Fromfelter, right, didn't I? I'm so sorry. And then, Emma McLeven, McLean?
McLeveen.
McLeveen, I am so sorry. Student, so pardon me. So, thank you so much for your participation.
Thank you so much. Absolutely. Ladies, thank you so much for your hard work and your dedication. We love Bellevue High School very much.
Awesome, thank you. And then, I'm going to give you, this is the real check.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you so much, congratulations. I would just like to, again, thank the school board for allowing us to do this in the school. We treasure our Red Ribbon Week. It's a lot of hard work and effort on the part of the Alliance, the staff. It's a big effort by our whole community. Downtown decorates with red. Business partners in the community put our yard signs up. Everybody participates in the community, and we really, really appreciate it. So, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
Now, if you'd please stand and join us for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Now, have Ms. Diane Scroggy, Program Coordinator, Take Stock in Children, please come forward to recognize our scholarship recipient.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name's Diana Scroggy. I am the Program Coordinator for Take Stock in Children, which is a program of the Public Education Foundation here in Marion County, and I was asked by Reverend Cummings and Dr. Gullett to come address the board tonight to share some really exciting news about one of our students. This is Zania Williams. She is a senior at Vanguard High School. She's also dual-enrolled and will graduate this year with her AA. And Zania is the recipient of the statewide Leadership Fellowship and Scholarship called Leaders for Life, which is a part of the statewide Take Stock in Children program. And we just found this out last Friday, and Reverend Cummings said, "You've got to come tell the board, because this is something that we've got to end on a good note as we head into the holiday season." The scholarship is worth up to $10,000 a year, up to four years of college, so a total of up to $40,000 a year. Zania was selected amongst all of the Take Stock seniors that submitted applications statewide. And what's really great about this is that Mark Asoski, whose family foundation funds the scholarship, absolutely fell in love with Zania's application and her video when it was submitted. And initially, they told us that Zania did not get the scholarship, but he saw something in Zania that we knew she had, and I'm so glad he did. And he called on Friday through our Take Stock State Office and said, "I'm funding Zania, too." And so, with the help of several people in this room, we pulled off a surprise on Friday for Zania, and were able to tell her that she is getting the scholarship. She heads with us in January to Tallahassee to represent Marion County in front of our legislative delegation, in front of the governor, and the rest of the legislature. I'd like to say that in Marion County, we definitely take care of our own, and in eighth grade, when we accepted Zania, she qualified hands down for the Take Stock in Children program. But one of the things that we loved about her was how much she admired her mother and how much she talked about that she was her hero in her life. And as a single mom, her mother, Terri Haynes, who is also standing behind me, she was driving, she was a bus driver for Marion County Public Schools, and she still is. Yes, and she still is, but in eighth grade, when we took her, we said, "Oh, my gosh." And she still is, and thanks to Ms. Becky Rora, the other day, we were able to get her off her bus route, but don't worry, she went and drove some later that evening, and she was at the surprise as well. And we are so thankful that the leadership of Take Stock at the state level saw in Zania what we did, and now, Zania does not have to worry about heading to college next year. She's going to be a USF Bull. She made that decision on Friday once the worry was gone. And we are just so proud and so grateful to all of you for your support and for allowing us to come and celebrate Zania tonight. And we're proud of her mama, too, for all the hard work that she's put in, and we're grateful to her, because not only has she driven a bus for 26 years, but she always takes on extra routes when she can, and I know that's significant right now, to say the least. So, that is Zania, everybody. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Come on forth, Zania.
Chairman.
Hold on, phone's...
Oh, yes, sir.
You want to give her the opportunity to say something?
Yes.
I am still ecstatic. It was unbelievable when I found out I won. I knew that it was God's plan, because Mr. Asoski, he went back and he reviewed my application, and he said, "You're one of the top seven." So, seven for, seven, the number seven for now will be my lucky number, and I am thankful beyond measures.
Wow.
Well, let me say this first. Seven's not your lucky number. Seven is the number of perfection. So, their list wasn't perfect until they had you on it, so...
Oh, boy.
So, we are grateful and thankful that they looked at the list again and saw that they need the list to be perfect and not incomplete. So, Zania, we are so excited for you as a district. We're excited for you, what you represent, what your family represents. Listen, I didn't know this till today, but your aunt is my administrative assistant. Did not know that till today. I should have known, because I know who your mom is, but we are, we are, listen, you guys, I think I took a picture of her and I posted on Facebook of the expression that was on her face when she walked in the door, because she could not believe what was happening. And I know your family's proud of you, I know we are proud of you, and you have to represent, just have to represent. I'm just proud of you, extremely proud, so...
Yes, sir, I appreciate it.
Mr. Browning, you have something?
Yes. Would you, you were going awfully fast. I would like to hear that again, that AA business, and as you graduate, could you just elaborate a little bit on that? We're talking an associate's degree?
Yes, sir.
As you move forward, would you tell me a little bit about that? That is such an accomplishment. I'm just, I'm overwhelmed.
Yes, sir. So, my junior year at Vanguard High School, I had decided that IB program was no longer for me, so I was like, "I have to do something else. What else is out there for me?" So, I went to honors, and I was like, "I'm going to do the dual enrollment program." It was a big leap, because there wasn't that many people at Vanguard High School doing dual enrollment, so I stepped out of my boundaries, and I got into the program, and I took extra classes every semester so that I could meet the requirements to get my AA in the spring. So, I'm still ecstatic.
Incredible, that's incredible.
Thank you.
I am so impressed. That level of success is just beyond belief.
She will actually graduate with her AA before she gets her high school diploma.
Oh.
Sir.
My word, congratulations.
Yeah. Mr. Cummings just talked about the expression, and I saw that, and I even commented on his Facebook page, and I was like, "I loved your expression," but I have to say, seeing your expression and your smile in person is even brighter than what was on the Facebook page. And we have to recognize your mama, too. I love that you recognize your mom as being your hero, because you're right, you wouldn't be where you are today without her full support. And Mama, I know that's dedication, and she's, you've been a good example for her, because that's exactly what you are, and it's really exciting to see where you're going, and go Bulls! I attended there. I didn't graduate from there, because I moved to a different college. My husband is a Bull, and my daughter graduated from a Bull, so... I know, I started to do that. And hopefully, you'll come back to Marion County one day.
Of course, yes. Definitely share my story.
Ms. Throer?
I hope this is, and I know, I don't hope, I know, this is going to be the first of many standing ovations that you get.
What can be said that hasn't already been said, except, I'm going to reiterate what you started with, that you knew that this was God's plan. And sometimes, things happen differently than how we have planned, but He has an ultimate plan, and you understand that, and I'm blessed to know that you're a blessing to this community, to your school, to your college, and now to your university. And I know that you'll continue to carry that with you. Your mother, obviously, is a huge inspiration to you, your whole family, your aunt over there, we know she's kind of cool, too. But I'm just, I'm grateful to know that you also are grounded in understanding that the Lord has an ultimate plan for you, and as long as you keep that as the focus and the center, you're going to go farther than you could ever imagine, more than you hope or think.
Yes, ma'am.
Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. I was there when you were a finalist and announced, and I was with Mom, and I just want you to know and hear again this publicly, that you are a role model for so many young women, men, too, but especially young women, and so just know that, that people are watching to say, "She did it, I can do it, too." So, thank you.
Before you go, because this is what was impressive to me, I asked you, I was like, "What are you going to major in? What do you major in by you going to USF?" Because it was between Florida Gulf Coast, FAU, or USF. So, tell us about what you majored in.
I plan to major in biomedical sciences with a minor in Spanish. I plan to get my minor abroad in Barcelona, Spain. The reason I am choosing to do biomedical sciences is because I want to become an oncology physician assistant. I plan to do cancer research. In 2012, I lost my grandfather to prostate cancer, and he's left an ambition on me to pursue my dream to find a cure for cancer, because I want to make sure no other individual endured what he experienced. And being so young, watching him grieve and seeing the pain that he had, it inspires me to make sure no one, no one else experienced that.
Can I speak to that? You're in the most perfect spot, because you're down there with Moffitt.
Yeah.
And I, unfortunately, I have a family member, my mom, who has had a cancer that is very, very serious, and the outcomes aren't usually well, but she went to Moffitt, and she's still with us today. And so, that's awesome that you're...
Nothing but God.
Yes, right, nothing but God, and you're in the best spot.
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all give another hand, please.
Thank you, family. Thank you to our family for coming as well. Thanks, y'all.
I didn't know Ms. Haynes was her auntie.
Listen, I didn't know that today. I knew, I didn't know, but I did know. I saw my administrative assistants.
Is that...
Norvella.
She's not being honest.
Yes, she did.
Beautiful.
Yeah, yes. All right. We back ready? Everybody good? Okay. Superintendent, I recommend the approval of the agenda for the December 14, 20, I'm sorry, Superintendent.
That's okay. Oh, it's hard to follow. I recommend approval of the agenda for the December 14, 2021 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of item C10.1, that has been pulled and placed under discussion.
May I have a motion on Superintendent's recommendation?
So, moved. Second.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 28, 2021...
I think we need to take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm rushing, y'all, ready to go. I was excited. Any questions? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed by the same sign. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the September 28, 2021 School Board Meeting?
Moved.
Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? There being none? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 7, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So, moved.
Moved by Ms. Throer, seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Is there any discussion? All in favor, signify by, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Names have the same sign. Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 12, 2021 School Board Meeting?
So, moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 21 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So, moved.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 26, 2021 School Board Meeting?
So, moved.
Moved by Board Member Throer.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? No question. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 1, 2021 Special School Board Meeting?
So, moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 4, 2021 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
So, moved.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throer. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? There being none? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Approve unanimously. I'll now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to engage, who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's secretary no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order received by the school board's secretary. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board's here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator's staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that includes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you. Elena, are there any speakers?
Yes, sir. Mr. Robert Schmidt.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, board members. My name is Robert Schmidt, 11488 Southwest 82nd Court Road, Ocala, Florida, 34481, SCHMIDT. I have some amazing students. I mean, I could not believe what I just heard this evening, and I think that probably those are metrics of success. If somebody looks at what is a metric of success, that is a metric of success. So, congratulations to everybody in the school system, but especially to the parents and to Zania. Did I get that right? So, I think she deserves a round of congratulations. I realize the board has lots to cover this evening, so I'll try to be brief, okay? Tonight, I'd like to address some of the recurring concerns I have been hearing from citizens and parents of Marion County. You have heard me discuss this from a previous address to the school board a couple of months ago. I realize these are difficult decisions to have, especially in the public domain, but this is the only venue I know of how to discuss this or to have this discussion. For your awareness, I have made attempts to take and address the school board using the email address that's on the Marion County website, Marion County Public School System website, and I've tried it four times, and there's been no feedback from it. It may be that maybe that email address is not being monitored, or is not addressed or something, but four attempts to take and reach out to the school board from that website, okay, from that email address. You may want to check it, just to see if it works. So, I'm certain each of you are acutely aware of the continuing dialogue and community actions across this country on curriculum and content being taught. These concerns expand into nuances of the classroom, as well as the books available in the school libraries. Engaging, engaged, and discerning parents rightfully have a substantive reason to ask these questions. I think that I'll refrain from discussing what the 800-pound gorilla is, because it can be very divisive, and I'll stay away from that. But I'm certain that probably the school board can read into what's not being said, okay, and I'd just keep it at that. So, this evening, my first set of questions, I do have a series of questions, okay, that I'd like to bring to the school board, and I don't know how I get the feedback, but somehow I'd like, you know, we had tried it once before. I had presented some questions to the school board, and at the very end, some of those questions were answered, but there, again, it was an answer, it was one way, you couldn't really get into this dialogue, back-and-forth dialogue. So, I'm not sure how that happens, okay? And certainly, that does help parents. Me standing here, addressing, transmitting, without any feedback is fairly useless. I mean, it makes you feel good, but it doesn't really accomplish much. So this evening, my first questions to the school board are how are parents able to assess to their own satisfaction? The curriculum and content they hear about that's being taught across the country that is being objected to is not taught in the Marion County Public School System, okay? How does a parent know Marion County Public School Libraries are not including available reading material, certain books found, that parents are taking objection to in those libraries? Who do parents or organizations representing the concerned parents have this discussion with, okay? I might suggest the question be brought to the school board meetings, but as I said before, this is really not the forum, and it's me, it's us sitting here transmitting, but there's never the feedback piece of it, okay? So we might think about how that feedback occurs, okay? My next set of questions result from a meeting I attended this morning on the topic of Marion County Public Schools. I realize there are staffing challenges and sympathize with those that are working the issue. More importantly, I applaud the innovative ideas being developed and employed by the school staff. However, my guess is the staffing issues are not going to go away anytime soon. We discussed how we, as an organization of concerned citizens and parents, might step forward as a part-time substitute teachers or other programs such as Bus Buddies or other areas facing critical staffing issues. The question is, how do we go about helping the school systems? So in closing, I realize we are concerned citizens who want to help and who believe that every student deserves access to an education that allows them to discover their unique talents and nurture those talents into skills that create value for themselves, their communities that they work and live in. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Any more?
One more. Mr. Albert Edwards.
Excuse me, sorry for my voice. Dr. Gullett, well, the next speaker is being located. Would you be willing to just check in on the email situation? Because there was a group email that was sent to me and all board members that I did not receive, and it wasn't this one, but I had communication in another way with this citizen and was able to just share with him, you know, via phone that I did not get the email. So he sent it to me, just to me, and I got it right away, and it didn't get hung in the filter. I never got the other group email that was to all of us. So I think that that is really important for the community to know that we are accessible. And Mr. Schmidt was absolutely right, this, it's comment time, but there is a mechanism, lots of mechanisms, absolutely, for our citizens to be in touch with their board members. Hate to say it, but including Facebook. If you can't find me on Facebook, then your eyes are shut. Thank you.
I mean, superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Certainly, Board Member Thor, we'll take a look at that and have the team, I think referenced the website in particular, so we'll make sure that that's accurate. Yes, we certainly will do that.
Formal emails certainly needs to be.
It very well could be.
Absolutely, thank you.
There's that thing on our email that will block certain things, so. Because I have.
I can see how frustrating that would be.
Correct, correct.
Chair Cummings, our speaker, Mr. Edwards, is speaking on a discipline matter of a student, so that's going to be off air, so we can move forward.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So there's no other public comments?
Yes, sir.
All right. May I have a motion to adopt the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor.
The board is required by statute to issue and approve an annually updated five-year district facilities work program of all projected school system capital outlay, construction projects, and major maintenance projects for submittal to an approval by the Department of Education.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the five-year district facilities work program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? Any discussion? No discussion? Yes, Mr. Browning?
Yes, I got real good feedback on this, on this issue. It's just so hard to look out like five years and then to see the various gaps in dollars. And it's, it's a tribute to the district struggling through long plans like that and being a steward of these dollars. It's incredible, the size of the numbers, and I'd just like to, something this big and looking out that far ahead of the ship, wow. It's just very profound to me to see this take place. There's so much work goes into it, and there's so many needs, and there's a lot of goodwill. I just, I want to have as much interaction within the community as possible as these things come along, because it's so hard, like with this building right here, if it was, if it was an academic building, it's so hard to stretch and get everything right, and everybody's trying and really trying hard. So I just thought it merited some discussion, some maybe just accolades for getting done what we do get done, what the district does get done, and that there is flexibility in this, and I'm assured that there is flexibility in it so that we can adjust this thing as we go along. And I think that's critical, because, you know, times change, needs change, and the cost of things really, really matters. I've been assured that we're going to grind out by staff, that we're going to grind out these numbers. And as I've said before, I can always get, this is theoretic, but I can always get ten percent, sometimes better than that, on almost any deal, just simply you can do it if you really get in and grind it. And on some of these numbers are very large, and if you can get ten percent, that's like seventy million dollars on our budget. And how exciting is that opportunity, especially if we have that focus to do it and to grind it out with suppliers, with the construction companies, and not just go with those five or, you know, that type of thing, not just go with the flow because we've done it in the past. I've just gotten real solid assurance that they're going to grind these things out, and they're going to do it in a method that I'm used to. And I just thought that's for the good of the cause to bring that, those comments forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Any other comments? Ms. Thor?
One quick question for Dr. Gullett. How often is the five-year work plan reviewed?
So Board Member Thor, we bring that to the board for updates throughout the year for work sessions. As far as how we report that to the state, I would have to verify how many times we're reporting it, because there's different cycles involved in that five-year work plan, right? So there's a tentative plan, and then there's a follow-up plan. So I could get that information to you, but we continue to review that through work sessions and then update that and make adjustments.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that, because it is important for us to be able to be nimble and responsive, and I remember being part of those updates and where certain projects have been reprioritized or removed even for that reason. Thank you very much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? All ready for vote? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-one dash eleven, a resolution for the redistricting of the five district school board members' residence areas?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member King Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Motion approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve considering agenda items C eight point one through C twenty-five point one, with the exception of item C ten point one that has been pulled and placed under discussion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three instructional calendar? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor?
Well, I was just going to say, since I was on this committee, the reason for the change is because of the new requirements for progress monitoring, and the testing window really hasn't changed. So while a majority of, a small majority of the community preferred spring break that responded to our survey to be in April, which is a little later than typical, now we're, hate to use the term because I hate being boxed in for anything, but it makes much more sense to go back to that March spring break date. So that's what this is all about.
Then we need to make an amendment then. Okay, okay.
Yes.
All right. So can I?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to make a motion then for the amendment? So I make a motion, and motion. I make a motion to amend the school calendar for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Second.
I have a second. Motion has been made by Board Member King, seconded by Board Member Thor. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
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 As to the amendment, approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and recommended order from Yolanda Y. Green Administrative Law Judge?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. We good? May I have a motion to approve the renunciation disclaimer of life insurance?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion?
Yes. Yeah, this one stuck out to me a little bit, and for good cause, and I don't, I wasn't exactly sure, and I checked this afternoon, and I don't know who we should check with, but I went in to look at my beneficiaries, because when someone passes away, hopefully they have somebody that they would like to call their beneficiaries. And it makes, when there is a death, so much easier for the family members when they're named the beneficiary rather than having to, you know, go through this or be contested or whatever may be happening. But this afternoon, I did look at mine just to see how to get in the air, and I know in the past, my beneficiaries have been removed for whatever reason, and this afternoon I looked, and my beneficiaries aren't there. And I know I have put them in, so I don't know if there's a glitch in the system or if something's going on where it will erase, you know, who you have or maybe what I have, because we have, everyone, you know, we have life insurance. And I know when we first, you know, when we first applied, we're there, but this past year, I happened to go and look, and I saw that I didn't have any. I entered them, and then today I looked again, and they're not there. So I don't know if it's a yearly glitch or something's going on, but if we have seven thousand employees, you know, I would hate to think that we, they would not be able to name their beneficiary. So I hope that we can figure that out.
Thank you, Ms. King, because you're absolutely right.
Yes.
Minds were gone too when we came to open enrollment. Mine were gone last year, and I had to put them back in. They came to open enrollment, I had to put them back in.
Yes.
So I just thought it was something dealing with open enrollment that they moved it. But I think that's something that we need to have risk management, definitely look at, superintendent.
Yeah, if they do do that, they need a reminder every year to go in there.
To make sure your beneficiaries aren't in there, but even now, you just checked yours. I got to check mine tonight, because anything can happen, and that leaves the family in limbo.
Yes.
With things and how that's happening. That's actually why we're on this situation right now, because something, a family's in limbo. Attorney?
And whether or not that appears on our online record within our records, the failsafe is supposed to be that the insurer themselves should have the written verification of that and should have ongoing knowledge of whom the beneficiaries are. And as we found out, that's not always the case. And I would strongly recommend that what, as Ms. King has indicated, that people check that and that we also review not only whether or not it shows up within our Marion County Public Schools system, but also that the insurer has those records and that those records are being maintained appropriately. And that may be part of an audit process, or it may be part of a process by which we review periodically to ensure that if there is any systemic issue, it's not replicated, because this can have relatively, you know, devastating consequences. And people need to, need to, I hate to put the burden on the people who are insured, but they certainly, it would be in your best interest to check that, but it's also in the best interest of the district to be making sure that those records are maintained accurately.
Certainly. So important for the family, you know, because it's a trying time anyways, and if they're named the beneficiary, then they can almost immediately get that money, and it can pay for funeral costs and, you know, whatever unfortunately they may need it for. And also, it's just so important because, you know, if somebody had a wish on who they wanted that to go to, and then when that's not there, then it's, I guess, of anyone or next of kin or whatever, so.
So can we, superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Chair Cummings and board members. There it goes. So we will follow up, I'll follow up with risk management and follow up with the board members, but we'll also follow up with the employees. And I was too thinking that it's because of annual enrollment, but we'll make sure that we communicate what that looks like to ensure they can check records.
I think it definitely needs to be some type of, because you don't get a new policy every year.
Correct.
You don't get a hard copy every year, so if it's kicking it out every year.
Right.
That's going to be an issue, and we just need to make sure we take care of that.
We would make, we will make sure to notify employees if anything is needed on their part.
For all those that's watching, please go check your insurance tonight and make sure that your stuff is updated correctly and that your beneficiaries are in there. Yes, sir.
And it can be confusing also, so if somebody could give a guideline to tell them how to get into and where to find it and how to change it, because I had to play with it a little bit to figure out how to see it. So if we could just simplify it and make it much easier for them, that would be good too.
Absolutely. And some screenshots perhaps.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Right. Step by step.
Step by step.
Attorney Powers.
I was going to say, I may also suggest that even if your beneficiaries are there and properly listed, that it's always a good idea for your just general financial health to check and ensure that you want those same beneficiaries to be the ones who are designated. People, beneficiaries change. Certain beneficiaries may pass before you do, may freeze you, or, you know, there are certainly instances of people who have, their beneficiaries have changed, the people whom they want to designate that money to go to. So it's a good idea that even if beneficiaries are listed, that you update those on a regular basis.
Thank you. All right.
We need a vote.
So we need a vote, so all in favors, any other discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed have the same sign. Approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donation that have a total value of one hundred thirty-nine thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars thirty-nine cents. Public Education Foundation of Marion County grants for great ideas, valued at eighty-three thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars eighty-six cents to Bellevue Elementary School, two thousand three hundred three dollars and fifty cents. Dunell High School, four thousand dollars, three thousand six hundred sixty-four dollars eight cents, and one thousand dollars. Dunell Middle School, five thousand dollars. H Street Elementary, one thousand dollars. Fort McCoy School, four thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents, and one thousand dollars. Howard Middle School, four thousand seven hundred eighty-six, four thousand seven hundred eighty-six dollars, three thousand eight hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, four thousand nine hundred fifty dollars. Madison Street Elementary School, four thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars seventy-five cents. Marion Oaks Elementary School, two thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars twenty-three cents and four thousand eight hundred eighty dollars nineteen cents. Osceola Middle School, two thousand seven hundred sixty-two dollars seventy cents, three thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars, three thousand five hundred dollars thirty-seven cents, one thousand dollars. Romeo Elementary School, five thousand dollars. Vanguard High School, two thousand dollars. Vanguard High School, $2,000. Westport High School, $2,348. And $4,649.12 again. $2,900 to Bellevue High School from Mid-Florida Regional Manufacturers Association. $3,678.11 to Bellevue Santos Elementary School from Wind Dixie Stores Incorporated. School supplies valued at $1,122 to Emerald Shores Elementary School from El Shaddai Pentecostal Holiness Church. $1,500 to Forest High School from Ocala Marion County Hospitality Council. $1,000 to Fort King Middle School from Marion County Hospital District. $2,500 to Howard Middle School from their business partner Cox Communications via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $26,000 to Marion County Public Schools Curriculum, Instruction and Digital Learning Secondary from Fairburn Foundation. $5,000 to Marion County Public Schools Marion After School Programs from the Benevity Community Impact Fund. $6,000 to Marion Technical College from Chief Greg Graham Foundation Care of Community Foundation for Ocala Marion County Incorp. $2,500 to Oak Crest Elementary School from their business partner Cox Communications via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $1,283.50 to Spar Elementary School from Peter and Mary Louise Van Note. $1,108.37 to Vanguard High School from Southeastern Grocers. Books valued at $1,277.55 to Wamina Park Elementary School from Enchanted Backpacks. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thora.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion?
Yes, a huge thank you and, uh,
We ain't there yet.
Appreciate it.
We ain't there yet.
I know we do it.
We ain't there yet. We ain't there yet. We ain't there yet. Let's vote, let's, let's vote. I know you want the money.
I'm impulsive, compulsive.
You gonna have, you gonna be able to give the thank you tonight, so hang tight.
Yes, thank you. Prepare to vote.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pose have the same sign. Now, there you go, Mr. Brownie.
Well, a huge thank you and it is so important, especially the way it pulls the community together. Uh, it's, it's an opportunity, uh, to excel. And it goes way beyond just the dollars. Uh, that participation is, is enormous. So, um, domarigato in Japanese, um, mercy boku, you know, whatever, however you want to say it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie. All right. Graci. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 6th, 2021 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss one-mill referendum. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 20th, 2021. No, 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 let me back up. Should be 2022.
22.
Yes.
Apologies.
No prob, no problem. I want, let me back up. I'll do it correctly. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 6th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss one-mill referendum. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for January 20th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss quarterly data review and MTI, MTC updates. All right, we're about to end. Board comments? Superintendent?
Just briefly, thank you, um, Chair and members of the board. Just wish everyone a wonderful holiday. Reminded to our students to stay safe, um, enjoy their time with their families. And, uh, we had a great celebration to kick off at the parade on Friday and celebrating our teachers and the caravan. And so want to continue that and have everyone back here healthy and safe in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Nothing from legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brownie?
Uh, let's see, yes. Let me, uh, pass these around. This was actually a horizontal image, uh, that got put in way up and down. So there's a, you just have to use your imagination on, on part of it.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, the, um, this is, if, if, if you can just look off to the, to the side, it's, it's a picture of the county commission. And, uh, the way they have it set, since we're making our move and, and, uh, I know there's a lot of things that are happening. I, I very familiar with this particular setup and I've been in, on a lot of boards. And what, what I'd like to recommend is that, number one, I love the way there's a little bit of space in be, in between when we get all five on one from a health point of view. Uh, I just feel very strongly about this for myself. Each of us have to look out for ourselves, plus I want to look out for my fellow board members. So I would like to see, uh, enough room where I don't, I haven't seen the setup over there. But I would like to see it, if possible, or make this recommendation, that we have that spread so that when a board member is speaking, we can make a turn. There's enough room, you know, to be able to address them cleanly. Then, the way they have it set up here is, I, I like the idea of, uh, the superintendent, uh, being in a position where, when people, and, and I'm just going back to my marketing background. That's just where I'm going, just tossing this out for the good of the cause. When, um, when people are addressing, I would like them to go directly to, be able to go directly to the superintendent and have that be distinct and different than the board. Like, uh, and, and I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but like, if it was this situation, I would say she would be somewhere in this neighborhood and the board would be like that. Then her staff would be wherever they are in, in including the, the clerical stenographer portion where she can access them. And, and I just came into this, there was a setup, but it was a COVID setup. And that's just the way it was. So I'm, I'm just tossing this out. I'd like to see some of those. I've, I've made some comments, uh, but I wanted to make them to the board because we, you know, I don't know if we're voting on how we set things up. I don't know if we will, but I thought it was a good, it was a good opportunity. Since we're making this move and I want to be safe and everybody wants to be safe and I like people to be able to get to and with our attorney, I would like to, if it's legal, I'd like to be able, and that's the way the commission, why I was liking, and I'm, I'm familiar with these people and dealt with them a lot. When you go to the, to the lawyer for the commission, you look right at, I mean, you, it's a specific spot. It is not the board. It is the lawyer. And that's, I, I really like that differentiation. I don't know if I'm making myself clear and I want it for, I want it for here. If I'm out in the audience, I want to be able to turn and I'm addressing at that point. So that was my reason for bringing it forward. Sorry it was only half, but just, just pretend like there's one, two, there's one more, one, one, uh, one and a half people missing there. So, um, let's see. The next item is, in the interest of, of time and smoothness, and I'm trying my best to get this right, but still honor, uh, with the consent agreement, uh, agenda. I'm trying to get it right, but still give the dignity to these monumental items that are in here on a regular basis. And there's just like one more chance to get the word out to the public. And it's the, the, the session we had, the work session we had last week, all that dialogue, that was incredible. And I just think that somewhere along the way, uh, some of these, we could have a criteria of $50,000 and up or something. It's just, there's just a, uh, uh, what would you say, a dignity to big money. And when it's big money, some discussion, if, you know, if you need the discussion like that, but just to have the dignity to it, uh, and out of a, because it isn't routine, because it's so big. So, um, there were several in here, but they, I was able to get satisfied with staff. Satisfied, but not to the point where everybody understands what went into it and the stewardship that was involved. And maybe lack of stewardship on some things where we're, we've been doing it a long time. And that's my, that's always the thing I want to get at. If you've been doing it a long time, that is not a good criteria for, for, uh, great stewardship, you know. So that's, with that said, uh, some of these were amazingly ground out before my time on the board. And, uh, somebody needs to say all that goes into this because sometimes it looks like they just fly right through. And some of these do not just fly right through, so. Bullying policy, I'd like to see something through the next year, two years. I'd like to develop from, uh, what we got in the, um, in the, uh, at the school board, what was that convention you call it? The, the, the School Board Association Conference. And that was, um, the, the idea of bullying, we have the policy. And here's what I'm seeing, when I get a call, uh, maybe you all are seeing this too. And I just want to have this, have this discussion or make this comment that there's a, there's, if you look at it like an algebraic equation, you have an equal, equal sign where there's an incident. It's always on both sides are equal, uh, you go two weeks before, and I'm just making up that number, but two weeks before, what I'm hearing, students maybe come home, they're just crying their eyes out. They're being bullied, they got this major problem and it finally comes to a head. When it comes to a head, the guy that perhaps stood up, I mean, it, it's often judged right from that moment going forward. And I find when I'm talking to principals and, and to, to players and to staff members, everybody's doing the best they can, but they're, they're, they're like, it's like screeching sound on a blackboard with fingernails. It's, everybody's tense and it's a real difficult situation. A lot of things are coming down with social media, kids are coming to school. These, uh, in, in a ready for, almost ready for combat. It's almost like it's a, a ballgame or something. And it's, it's, uh, uh, it, it's a situation where I would like to see a really clear understanding and a way of getting to a, almost a judicial way of thinking a week ahead of time. I want to have, and I keep saying I want, but this is just, I'm advocating, I'm suggesting, I want to have a way for a bullied kid to really get heard, to maybe not ever get to that equal sign, never get to the punch in the nose kind of a thing, whether it's for a family member, whether it's for themselves or however it finally turns out. So if we could do that and, and maybe not, I think right now we're reacting a lot to incidents. And I want to really focus on the two weeks beforehand and how many ways did we maybe have to address it then? And it's just, it's, it seems to me like a, uh, like a huge opportunity. If, if you're a kid and you're scared, I know we had some rough kids when I was, when I was a youngster. There were some rough kids around and you needed protection. I mean, you really did. They, in, it used to be called a juvenile hall or, you know, they went off to a, they went off to a place. It, it was tough and sometimes you needed protection. And it was, we didn't have anybody to go tell. I mean, you just knew it and you kind of protected yourself, that type of thing. So if we could, if we could go down and we got a lot of pros on board and I really dwell on this two weeks before, the equation, and then the two weeks after, maybe we don't even get there. So it's just a, it's a, it's a thought process. I just wanted to advance for the good of the cause. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie. Um, in regards to bullying, we do have a, a bullying policy. We don't tolerate the bullying. The district has been very clear, um, about how we feel about bullying. And, and there does need to be some, um, I guess, looking at how things are handled for the victim and the perpetrators. I think that's what I'm hearing you say.
That's what I'm saying, yes. Really look into it, like, like, you know, when an incident happens, often we come from the point of the incident and that's the big deal. Okay, well, wait. You had to punch somebody in the nose because it was coming down and, you know. So I, I, what I'm really looking for is a, is a sincere, legitimate, professional channel for youngsters to advance their concerns. Because when a kid comes home and they're laying on the bed and just crying their eyes out and they don't want to go to school because, you know, things are coming down, maybe imaginary, maybe it's really for real, because things do happen. And I, I just want to advocate in that two weeks before the incident and we don't have the incident. Let, let's, you know, there's a definite maybe. Okay, so like that. It's, uh, I know we have the policy, uh, and our, our people are working really hard and some of them feel helpless, uh, like these things are coming on them too fast. And it, too much, too fast, and it just comes on. So if we're, we're jumping ahead, we have a way of addressing it in the comm before the incident. That's a pretty exciting time for me. Thank you.
Prevention, prevention.
Yes, sir.
Prevention.
Yes, sir. Change the tires, you know, when it's, when it's time. That's it, yeah.
Ms. Thora?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we are moving with lightning speed to the end of the semester. And halfway through the school year, it just seems unbelievable how fast this year has gone. And in a good way to think that, you know, we were experiencing the surge of the virus just as school was starting. And, um, so many people and, and families and kids just did everything that they could to, to suppress it and keep themselves healthy so we could kick it to the curb. Our, our numbers reflect that. I always have some trepidation when I open up the email from you, Kevin, talking about last week's numbers and, and, and how we did. And, and our numbers continue to stay low, our quarantines continue to stay low. And gosh, I certainly am very prayerful that that's going to, to continue because it's been so nice to talk about school stuff, you know, at, at the forefront again and, and proactive planning and talking about all the exciting things that are happening in our schools as we continue to navigate through all the challenges. So I continue to be very grateful for, um, everyone and, and the, and what they do on a daily basis to keep our kids safe, to, to educate them. It's, it's amazing, you know, and, and it always lifts me up when I get a chance to visit my schools and, and just that's where the rubber meets the road. And so I just wanted to, to wish everyone that, there's a couple of other board members that I know are going to talk about staying safe during the break. So, but I will say is, uh, please enjoy every moment, cherish all the good things you have in your life. Know that there is a network that is always standing by 24/7 to, to guide, help and support as needed. I continue to be very proud to work for this district and to acknowledge our challenges while we continue to, um, address them at the same time. So have a very merry vacation, Christmas, everything that you celebrate and come back, uh, ready for round two. The second thing I just wanted to ask Attorney Powers about, when it comes to the public comment requirements, and this is an offshoot from something that I've just felt a little uncomfortable with, um, for many, many years, but then it was clarified a little bit at the Florida School Boards Association Conference a week or so ago. And, and that is the requirement for paperwork for public comment in terms of, is it truly a requirement or is this just, you know, how we've done things to require that a person state their, their address, for example, in, in any day and age. But in this day and age, I would think especially. I would feel more comfortable just knowing where that form came from and, and what's really required and, uh, get everyone else's input. If there can be less privacy, I don't want, I think maybe intrusion is a little bit too strong of a word, but it has felt that way to me, both on this side of the, of this, the podium and on the other side when I've made public comment. So just wanted to get your input on that, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, while the Supreme Court is held, there's not any, um, there's not a privacy interest in, uh, public information such as your address that we can require. And under Florida statute, we can require someone to give us their address in order to, um, you know, make public comment. That there is no requirement that be done publicly, that it be stated, um, out loud and for camera. Of course, it becomes public record and it is something that is subject to be, um, reviewed if someone makes such a request. But the same is true. But the same is true of things like the property appraisers website or, or any number of factors in which unless you have a specific confidential address by statute, that it would be protected. However, that is a rule that we as a board set and it is a typical rule that most boards have set and some are now reconsidering as you properly state, for us to require that someone publicly state their address upon presentation to the board. So I think for, for our purposes, my opinion would be that it would be a good idea for someone to, you know, for example, state what portion of the county they live in or nothing at all. It certainly is, it's discretionary and it lies with this board to make that determination as to what they require people to indicate at the time they address the board.
So I think what I'm hearing.
That would be, that would be something that if we wished to alter our board rules as to what we require for people to do, then the board would simply make a motion and vote on that item.
Okay. So I think I'm hearing you say it's more the discretion of, of the board and it's not a policy, it's rules.
Right.
Of how we've conducted our, our meetings. And I think this may be where technology has been helpful in a challenge because those of us that remember our history, our board meetings and our work sessions did not use to be televised and public comment, especially even when we went to televise, public comment was not televised. But in the interest of, and transparency is way overused in, in my opinion, that, that word, in the interest of relationship building with the community and, and allowing, you know, encouraging that type of participation, we have been televising it and the work sessions have only been televised for a few years. That's something you may even brought forward, Chair Cummings, if I'm not mistaken. So there was more opportunity for privacy when, when it wasn't broadcast, number one, and also housed in perpetuity on YouTube for anyone to look at, you know, anytime. So maybe this can be a conversation that we don't come to a decision on tonight because it, it might be something that the board wants to think over or maybe the board is thinking kind of like I am, that I think it's respectful for someone to get up and state their first and last name. To me, that's just respectful. We know what our first and last names are, but other than that, I would propose just leaving it right there as long as we're not legally bound to do anything more. And I'm trying to think of what would be the negatives to that. For example, there may have been one time where I wanted to follow up with a citizen and I asked you if they had put their phone number or something on the form. But again, in this day and age, I think you can find people if you really want to. So those are my thoughts.
Chair.
Yes, Ms. Browning.
Yes, you know, it's amazing. I, I, I had that down exactly, so we're on the same page. And I just jumped over the top of it because I, you know, at, at, at the, at the meeting, they were saying absolutely no requirement for that. As a matter of fact, it's, I've always felt it was dangerous, always felt, that you do not give people three steps out of identity as five steps. And when you give three, you have the picture, you have the address and you have the name. There's a, there's a lot of information right there. And then you can flip to that other idea of a young lady coming up, giving a, three minutes of view plus her home address. I'm sorry, that's just too much for me. And there's no call for it at all, really. It, it's the way they were saying it at the, at the School Board Association. So I'm, I'm 100% on board with you on that, Ms. Thor, 100% on board.
Thank you, Board Member Browning. Anyone else have any comments on that? Bye, Chair.
I, I, I am completely in favor also, I remember the conversation at the School Board Conference in favor of the person not actually giving the information at the podium. I do think there is still value in having them write it on a, on the form because for the very reason that you said, perhaps the form doesn't even include their phone number, but might, that might be a good addition to a form so that we would have the ability to follow up with the person. But not asking them to give their address publicly would be a, a benefit, I, I think, for privacy, but for us to still have it as a part of the form they fill out so that there would be a way to communicate with them after the fact.
Especially since we just heard tonight that there was an instance of being contacted four different times. So now, of course, probably all of us want to rectify that. And so maybe you're right, maybe having it on the form would, would be helpful in terms of communication with our community.
Maybe voluntary, you know, or something. I, you know, because we're asking for information, we really do want people, we want the information, want them to come and speak. And, and we, you know, they know where we are and so, you know, it's just, I, I have no problem putting it down.
Right.
But, but kind of implying, requiring, I, I don't know, I don't know.
To be clear, I'm sorry, I was going to say, to be clear, as the board attorney, if someone were to indicate that they were not willing to give that information.
No.
I would not, I would not require it. In fact, there have been instances before in which after having read, please state your name and address, someone got up and obviously they were uncomfortable and they said, I live in Summerfield. I have allowed that to suffice. So, and, and that's, although our stated, stated rule is that that's what we're asking people to give, I would not be comfortable requiring more, so.
Maybe in, in terms of the volunteering your information, it could say on the form, the form could be adjusted in the, to facilitate further communication with you, you're encouraged or you're welcome to share your.
Contact information.
Yes, you're welcome to share your contact information, but it's not required.
Yes.
Optional.
Yes, optional.
I like that.
But, you know, welcoming that because it does sometimes make it easier to, to find somebody, so, okay.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, so please.
Oh, that, that's fine. I, I, I understand the, all of the dialogue and, and I, I do think that there is a benefit to having, at least for our viewing, if we so choose to look at it, to see, we, we haven't had many incidents of late where individuals from the public have come and spoken to us that we haven't known were a part of our community. We haven't had many issues that have come up that would be of such a nature that people from outside the community would be coming in in droves and, and coming from wherever they might want to be to talk on any issue that we might have before our school board. I do think there is value to being able to, at least after the meeting, to take a look at that and say, this person, this person, this person, this person, do they, do they have an Ocala or Marion County address? I mean, are they, are they a part of our community or are they just advocating for a position that is separate and apart from being a part of our community? And, and I, I understand the reason, pro and con to that because certainly public comment means public comment. It doesn't mean that you have to be a registered Marion County citizen to come and speak before our, our board. However, I do find there being value, depending on whatever the topic might be, that that person, if they're representing interests apart from our community's stances, values, whatever you want to say, that they're not, that they, that they would be representing a student that's not even a part of our community, that they would be representing a student in another state even. And this is, I, I, I think that there's a value in actually having that, that information just for us to have on record if we were to choose to take a look at it. That, that's, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Ms. King.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think our, our, anyone should be up there stating their address nowadays is just, almost as dangerous, truly, to, to any degree, actually. I'm like mixed. I can see Ms. Campbell's view of like, you know, seeing where they're from and, and stuff like that behind the scenes, but I also understand and respect that it's not a mandate, we don't have to do it. I'm comfortable just putting optional on there or something. And if people are comfortable, then they're going to do it and not think twice. And if they don't want to, then they won't.
I like optional. I like that term or contact information.
Or something, something like that. So I don't know what you think.
For me, for me, I, I look at it a couple ways. First of all, they could put whatever address on there on the sheet. We don't vet the addresses anyway. So we don't know if they're, so we don't know if they're telling the truth or not. Correct. So, I mean, I don't see the value in putting on there when you could just come down there and write one, two, three, Blue Street, whatever, and they're not even a Blue Street. Yeah. And, you know, so there's really not a, a real value because we're not vetting the addresses. So I, I see it from another perspective, from a, a law enforcement perspective. I, I do want to know if there's someone that showed up here and did put their information down there and then later on we have an issue with, that we need to be able to follow. But I also see it from where Ms. Campbell was stating about having some contact. So I like the option, I like to put in the word optional down there. And if they put optional, if they, it's on that person if they want to put their information down there or not. And hopefully we'll be able to contact them in the future if we need be. But there's really no value in them, and, and there's no, there's no legal precedent that says they have to.
Correct. And that was my, my point is that although we are not, we're not at any risk by requiring it because of the fact that we are permitted to require it, it's, there is not a legitimate privacy interest in one's address when speaking, but at the same time, we are under no requirement to, to, to have to require that information either, so.
And I would like to, and, and again, this, we're not vetting if, if the information is true or not, but I would like, if whoever comes before us, just give us a name. They, they may come, and we've had people come here and say, and say, they said John Doe and Jane Doe, and that's well within their right, but at least I have a name to address them while we're in this meeting. So, but as far as the address requirement, so if you guys aren't, aren't consensus, we can move forward and do we need to vote? Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, my agreement, I, I, I do want to say, does that mean that we're not going to have fingerprints and height and weight? And, no, I'm, okay, I'm sorry, I just, and so, and so let's, you have my, you have my consent.
And that's what I would, if the board gives consensus as to us altering our script, so to speak, that we ask people, we'll, we'll do so and we can bring it up as something that is, for the board to actually take action on at another time.
So as far as the, for the respect of, of the meeting, are we saying that we're going to ask people to, to state their name for the record? They may get up there and say, I'm John Doe. Well, I guess that'll be our hint that they don't really want to share their name. But at the same time, you know, when someone comes up to the podium, it, even though we don't typically respond, it's still part of building a relationship with the community. They're, they're welcomed and encouraged to come and, and say what they want to say. And then it's incumbent upon us to, to reach back out, to follow up. That's why I'm concerned about the foreemailing, that, that bothers me. But it's also the citizen's right to, especially on live television, to really not disclose a whole lot other than to say what they want to say. And then someone in the community, I guess, will recognize them and if they really want to find them, they will. But I would rather default to encouraging that mutual respect, but also honoring as much privacy as we can.
And I think the difference is that with the name, we're, we're going to be addressing, I mean, the person's going to be addressing us and we may address that person, the, the superintendent may designate someone to address that person or anything, that's, that's a matter of.
Off air.
Right, that's, and that's a matter of respectful address to the person, you know, not.
Courtesy.
Right, not necessarily information that we need to have on file.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then I'm good. Thank you.
Just for clarity purposes, are we saying we would like the script redone to include optional and also have the forms redone by the next board meeting on work session? I just want to make sure so.
Perhaps, maybe just drop that off. I would like to address the, the rest of that script in, in.
We just, we just, Ms. Browning, we just dealing with this.
No, no, I, I realize, and I'm saying, so, so to, to the point, I would like to see this be addressed because I, I like, I, I like what's being said. And then anything further, let's, don't go into it now because I think it's, I've written two or three prototypes, if you will, and I'd just like to get some reaction, just have some discussion, but that's for another day.
And we, we just need the script changed, that's correct.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and then as, as for changing the forms, my understanding is there is a review process by which we do that anyway. So we can, we can enact that process, but for now, I believe that it is appropriate for us to, beginning with our next.
Board meeting.
Board meeting or opportunity for public comment, that we, that that just be removed from the, from the script because we're certainly not required to read that.
And since it's not, it's not a policy, it doesn't have to go through a policy review, it's not a procedure, it's just something that the board requested.
So Chair, our first meeting is a work session. So do we want it before our, our next work session or before our next board meeting?
It could be for the work session.
Okay. Just for clarity.
Yeah, and that, that's something that, that we can, I, I don't know about the forms, but as, as to the, as to the script or as to what we ask people to do, that's something we can nearly do on the fly, so.
And, and the, and the board doesn't approve form, forms.
Right.
Anyway, so we can move forward with this.
Yeah.
And Elena then can change to.
Yeah.
Do what they need to do.
Almost procedural, isn't it? Like through the superintendent, almost procedural.
That's, we, we in her lane now, we need to let her and her team handle that one, so they got that one.
It's that simple.
Yeah. Thank you. I'm sorry, Elena, I didn't ask, do you have any comments tonight?
Uh, yes, just a reminder, board members, of course, that we will start our work sessions over at the MTI auditorium first of the year. Also, please, there's still a few small items left in your mailbox, please make sure you do clear them out before this evening as it might be difficult to get back in the building if, if you leave something. We'll find a way, but, you know, just if you clean, and if there's anything in the dais in the drawers that you might have left and you want to take them with you, certainly we'll find a place for you. You will have your filing cabinets in your mailbox in Building Three, Room 006. Hopefully I'll have that set up for you by tomorrow afternoon. And just wish everyone a very safe and Merry Christmas and it is my pleasure to serve as your Board Services Clerk. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I had a conversation and it sort of applies here to this moving out, and that is, the next building over has like 14 persons.
They're not moving.
No, no, I know they're not moving. They have like 14 persons using a restroom. And I, I would like to, at some point, make some determination whether or not these restrooms or access would be available. This is just a point to, to throw out. And if it's a no, then we know that it's a no through the superintendent. That's, that's all I'm saying and I just wanted to bring it up. Maybe we, we address some facilities over there or something because they've been using these facilities and now they're down, they're 14 for one, one restroom for the men, and I don't know how many women are there. I, I'm not privy to that information. However, I just bring that up. If there's, if it's a no, we just have to be aware of what, you know, of, of that particular situation and maybe have other facilities that, that they might be able to go to or, or whatever. But it's something to address. And Elena bringing that up just triggered that in my mind. Thank you.
Thanks. From my understanding, this building is going to be closed, correct?
Standard.
Correct, yeah.
That's correct.
I'm sure they will, they'll figure out something. We'll leave that to, to those, yeah, they'll, they'll work that out, they'll work that out. Did I get you, Ms. King? I did?
I did not. I'm waiting patiently.
Go ahead.
I did have a chance yesterday to sit on the DOH meeting with COVID and our community and our schools are doing very well. And it was good to hear that there is a distinction from last year and this year. And last year, we were already starting to build with the COVID numbers and they're not seeing that this year. So that's a positive and a plus. Mark also attributed it to, you know, our community has now had the COVID shots, we have herd immunity and, you know, there's always just good washing your hands and, and if you're sick, stay home kind of thing. And so that was just really good to hear that positive news and hopefully after Christmas, we're going to all come back healthy and happy. And that's basically what I have except for I want to tell everybody that celebrates Christmas, Merry Christmas and enjoy your holidays and I will see you guys next year.
Thank you, Ms. King. Bye, Chair. Campbell?
Sure, I wanted to just make one statement to the bullying thing that Mr. Browning was talking about and. was talking about, and I, I, he makes a very good point, but the point that I also want to make is that oftentimes whenever we're dealing with incidents of bullying, our response to the victim often is to move the victim instead of addressing the bully. And, and so that, uh, even the legislature has, has enacted that, so that the victim has the ability to move or to take a scholarship and go somewhere else or what have you. And so the more we can do to be proactive to address the root cause of what's causing that bully to act in that way, uh, I think that that will be positive all the way around. So I, I just want to make that statement. The fact that our response often is to move the victim and, as opposed to actually addressing the bully. But back on the other things I wanted to, to mention, uh, the Christmas parade was such a delight, uh, there certainly were thousands of our students that were participating in that, and all the volunteers and staff folks that helped, and our bus drivers and all that helped get our students there, I mean, that's a, a huge ordeal, and it really is truly a, a community event. But I want to give a shout out specifically to the video production staff, because that is a big, big undertaking that they do for our community and ensuring that there's camera crews out there and spotlights all up and down that route, and, and that it's broadcast and that it, it's broadcast quality. It's a lot of work, and so I'm grateful for all that the video production crew does to truly make it a community event so that the community can participate long after the event actually occurs, where they can watch it over and over if they want. And obviously from the school board perspective, again, special thanks to Florida Express Environmental for sponsoring our school board's float, we had a lot of fun. Also, on tonight's agenda, we approved the job description for the program manager, uh, from the consent agenda, the program manager for Howard Academy. And so today I had the opportunity to participate in the Governor's West phone call, this was, or their Zoom meeting, it was the day of their monthly meeting, and they were all quite interested to find out when that job will be posted. So I've been assured that when Mr. Green and, and Ms. Oliver have that, they're going to share the link with us, um, so that we'll be able to share that. That, that group in particular is very interested in, in that job becoming available to the community and to the public, so those that are interested can apply for it. I wanted to also make you aware, I'm not certain if you all received this email, as being on the legislative and advocacy committees with the Florida School Board Association, I'm not certain that you have received this, uh, but I received an email today about a bill that's been filed in the U.S. House about fully funding the IDEA, which is the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. It's a bipartisan legislation that would authorize mandatory federal funding for the IDEA over ten-plus years, thereby enabling full funding of the federal share of the IDEA. And so the FSBA has asked us, Florida School Board Association, has asked us to reach out to our U.S. representatives, and they gave a script and all, in, in order how to do that, so I'll be happy to do that for us. I'm, I'm not certain if you all received that email, but I, they may have just gone to the legislative committee for that, so I'll be doing that, um, on the school board's behalf. I'm assuming that you all agree with that, that we, we would like for that to, to move forward. So I'll be doing that, uh, this week. Also, because I'm, have mentioned it frequently, the Adam Hansen Youth Philanthropy and Action Program has wrapped up in four middle schools this fall, so I just wanted to give a wrap up so you all would be aware of that. Fort McCoy awarded the VFW Veterans Home, so just very brief synopsis, students go one day a week, or we have volunteers come in one day a week for six weeks, teaching middle school students about philanthropy. The students, uh, are grouped based on like-mindedness, and then they do a group presentation based on an imaginary $500, and if they win essentially, like the students do secret ballot voting, and whoever made the strongest case for why their organization and their cause deserved that $500, then thanks to the Adam Hansen, uh, Better Communities Fund, as well as other community grants that have been received, uh, that imaginary $500 becomes real. And so Fort McCoy, uh, a class of Fort McCoy students awarded the VFW Veterans Home with that $500 real check presentation. Bellevue Middle School had two classes, one awarded Brothers Keeper and the other one awarded Hands of Mercy Everywhere. Howard Middle School awarded the First Step Food Bank and the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, and North Marion Middle School awarded the National Alliance on Mental Illness NAMI of Marion County. And I bring that up to say, we have all of these middle school students and all of these different presentations, yet you hear among the six classes, they all chose different organizations, and it's because they all have different interests, and each one put in so much work into really making strong cases for very good causes in our community. And so I'm just grateful for participation in the Adam Hansen Youth Philanthropy and Action Program. We have a very strong schedule starting in January, uh, where we will have lots more schools that will be added on, and the schedule's already set, so I'll be happy to update you whenever those all happen. So just wanted to give that, uh, final note on that. On a personal note, tomorrow evening is the last night of the Wings of Faith Fellowship Magical Christmas Production, and I have to bring that up because it's under the direction of our own Kevin Christian. And within the choir, I was kind of counting in my head last night, within the choir, there are at least six school district employees, and the predominantly student-based orchestra includes two of our high school band directors, as well as students from three local high schools. So tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM at Wings of Faith Fellowship, 5066 Southeast 64th Avenue Road, uh, will be the final production of that event, but all of those folks are volunteering their time to be a part of that, with the exception, of course, of, of the part-time music minister, Kevin Christian, but the rest of those folks are all volunteering their time and have been volunteering their time since August to learn this incre- incredible music that we're putting forth. So that is, uh, on a personal note, so thank you for that. And then, uh, as others have said, I just wish everyone a very blessed and happy and Merry, Merry Christmas and a blessed and prosperous new year, because we will see each other in the new year. That's it.
Thank you. Let me handle, uh, a little business first, as I start my comment. I need to schedule an executive session to update the board and see the direction on the concern regarding, um, I'm sorry, an executive session for Thursday, January 6th, 2022, to discuss, uh, union negotiations. Okay? So that's going to be January 6th, 2022, immediately following our, um, work session. Okay?
Go ahead and list who needs to be present, please.
Okay. Those that need to be present will be, um, Ms. Melissa Kiner, Teresa Boston Ellis, J.C. Oliver, Brent Carson, Dr. Gullett, and Deputy Mark Villanello. And the timeframe will be for one hour, um, concerning union negotiations. Okay? It's January 6th, 2022.
I will send out invites first thing in the morning, board members.
Thank you. Also, um, I do want to acknowledge that, um, looking at our employee recognition calendar, the month of December, uh, we get to recognize some of our staff members, and these are some that we really, really, really need to show some appreciation to, and that would be, um, our custodial and our transportation departments. They have gone over and above and beyond what we needed them to do because, um, as Ms. King just stated, our numbers are, are down, way down. I was glad to see the report that came out on Monday that Kevin sent out, and we're doing good because everybody's, is, um, all hands are on deck. So we thank God for our, our, our custodial department, our transportation department. Uh, they have been burning the midnight, uh, uh, oil, burning the midnight oil, they've been burning the candle at both ends of the stick. They have been doing, uh, going above and beyond what we could ever ask of them, so I thank them. And again, we recognize you guys, and, um, we can't tell you thank you enough for the job that you guys do daily. We, we, we don't, I don't think sometimes people realize how many kids, uh, go through the, the lunchroom, go through our schools and walk through the halls, and they're clean and they're sanitary. I don't think people realize how many kids that we get to school and back home safely every day, and they do it five days a week, and they do it over and over and over again. And it is, is amazing what we do, this operation that we do, and doing it for the best of our kids. So I thank, thank our custodial and our transportation, um, departments and, um, all of our support services for what they're doing on a daily basis. Then, um, it is, uh, December, we're getting ready to go on break. I think everybody's looking for a break, a breather, uh, right now. It's been, it's been a long first, um, semester, but it's been an eventful and, um, good first semester. We have managed to be safe in all that we've been doing, we've been able to stay open and do the things that we need to do to educate our kids, to make sure our staff are safe. So I, I want to commend our district as a whole, and our, our chieftains, our superintendent, Dr. Gullett, and her team for making sure that, um, we did not have to, um, do certain things. We, we did what we need to do to keep our kids safe and keep our families safe. You, you can't, you can't measure how much, um, that means to the community, to the family that, what we've been, been able to do, so I commend all of our staff. And then, um, it is Christmas holiday, and I know Ms. Thor alluded to it, and I'm going to say it always, please be safe. It, it, we, be responsible, I'm just going to say that, please be responsible as we go out and celebrate and Christmas parties and New Year's Eve parties and all those things, please be safe. Our kids need to be in the right places at the right time. Parents, don't just let them be wide open, uh, we want them back next year. We want them back on January, I think it's January 5th, school starts back, and, uh, we want them back January 5th, and we want them back whole, and we want all of our staff to be back and to be back whole. So, um, enjoy the holidays, we, listen, we need it, we need a holiday right now. I think, uh, everybody's looking for a holiday right now, and we really need it, um, and just celebrate responsibly and do the right thing so we can come back. I too, um, enjoyed the Christmas parade with, um, my, my colleagues. I, I, I was looking at the number of people that were out on the street that were celebrating, that were, you know, the, the thing that, um, Christmas is that magical type holiday. Um, it's, it's a holiday of anticipation, it's a holiday of hope, and it's a holiday that, um, you most of the time see the best in people. And I wish it lasted all year long, that feeling that we have in the air, and to see that anticipation and the hope that we saw riding down Silver Springs Boulevard, and the little kids that were just excited to, to, to wave at a school board float with school board members. No Santa Claus, we weren't throwing any candy, we weren't throwing anything, but they were just excited, waving at us that, you know, and, and I think the excitement was, they didn't get a chance to do this last year, and they were able to be out and able to do it this year, so, um, it was just amazing, again, it was amazing, and I, I'm looking forward to, um, many more parades that we all can be in and, and just celebrate and enjoy each other and enjoy our community. We have a great community here in O'Callaghan, Marion County, and, uh, and I, I, I don't want to go too far without trying to address some of the questions that Mr. Schmidt did bring forth, because he brought forth some questions, and, um, I do, I would like for our superintendent to kind of direct him on where he can get those answers from, because those answers can be, those questions can be answered, and, um, they don't have to come from us as a board member. There are people that work in our district that can answer those questions. As a matter of fact, I think, um, if parents, if parents have any questions, they ought to start with the teacher. That's the first place, and if they don't get the right response in it, or, or adequate response, then I think they need to start, go to the principal of that school, but there is a system in place that they can get those answers. I don't want anyone to think that our community is not willing to answer these questions or cannot answer those, these questions, because there is a way that they can get their issues or concerns addressed as far as curriculum, as far as books, as far as, um, what's in our library, so, um, it is available. So, again, um, everybody have a Merry Christmas, have a safe Christmas, or, uh, whatever holiday that you, you're celebrating, I don't, I don't want to be politically correct and don't want to offend anybody, because several people celebrate different things, some people celebrating the Three Kings and, and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, but we want to be respectful of whatever holiday that you're celebrating, so please be safe, but, and celebrate it responsibly. So with that being said. All right, yeah, I thank you. I almost forgot, I almost forgot. And before, before I get to my board comments, this, this is the final part of my board comments. We, we just, um, we just came through a tumultuous year, um, and we're about to end it, but we, this board was led by, um, Ms. Thor. I consider her to be a, a great, great friend and colleague, and she did a tremendous job on navigating us through COVID, um, and leading us, and she led us with, uh, poise, she led us with, uh, tenacity and efficiency, and, uh, and we want to, uh, recognize her for her year of being our chair. When I became the chair a few weeks ago, they gave me the gavel, but we believe that Ms. Thor should get a gavel, serving as the chair of Marion County, and this is presented to, it says, "To Chair Thor for your service 2020 through 2021."
Wow. Thank you, thank you very much.
Short speech.
All I can say, that's all I got. Thank you, thank you very much. It's an honor and a pleasure to serve on the Marion County School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thor, you, you did an excellent job, excellent job. In the midst of people coming in and saying different things, you, you were poised, so I want to commend you for that, and, uh, thank you for leading us during that difficult time. All right.
While we're saying happy things, it appears we have a board member in our midst that is wearing a beautiful red dress, and my understanding is she has a birthday coming up.
Birthday.
So that narrows it down, it's not you, Chair Cummings.
Definitely not me.
It's not me. But I do believe it's our one and only Vice Chair, Campbell, so.
So happy birthday to our Vice Chair. She's 25 again?
Something like that. Thank you.
If we still want to keep people tuned in, I'm not going to sing you Happy Birthday, so they just know that, Happy Birthday.
And I can't sing, I, I can't sing it either, because Kevin, they don't play any birthday music in the key of Z. So, 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 happy birthday, um, Ms. Campbell, and we pray that you have a great, great, great birthday. All right? Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that the board members have received alternative placement list for students through November 16th, 2021. Ms. Martina Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
Yes, sir, we do have one, which we will be addressing off air.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student, excuse me, JD 22039, with educational services through the remainder of the 2021, 2022 school year?
I'm moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second?
Seconded by Board Member King. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Approve unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 22040, JD 22041, JD 22042, JD 22043, JD 22044, JD 22045, JD 22046, JD 22047, JD 22048, and JD 22050 with educational services through the remainder of 2021, 2022 school year, and the first semester of the 2022, 2023 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
At this time, I want to recess our meeting for expulsion matters, and meeting will be, um, recessed at 7:18.